Okay, you ready? All right, everyone ready? Okay, here we go. Good evening, welcome to the City of Groton Committee of the Whole for Monday, June 24, 2024. For the record, we are in a hybrid meeting, we're in council chambers, we also are on Zoom. Please note, from June 17th to July 15th, the main entrance of the municipal building will be closed due to renovations. During this time, a municipal building is open to the public by appointment only. We ask that residents attend meetings via Zoom. For full details, visit cityofgroton.com. I will call the meeting order. Court Precurer, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Sheffield, Counselor Norris, Counselor Piazza, and Counselor Patterson are present.
Thank you. New business referrals, appointment of the auditor, Ron, or Finance Director, excuse me.
So this will be the fifth year of the auditing firm of Clifton, Larson, and Allen, which was formerly Bloom Shapiro prior to that. So we did an RFP for the fiscal year 2020, starting with 2020, so again, this will be the fifth and final year of that bid package. The fee, the total fee, this includes the Basel and Power audit as well, will be eighty one thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars, up from seventy nine thousand, five ninety, or a two percent increase over the previous year. And this was just part of their proposal when we bid this out five years ago.
Okay, questions or comments from the council? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Can you remind me the schedule? So we're appointing them now, and then they start the report, and then when do we get the audit back?
So it depends on the, on the year from the audit standpoint. They're actually just finalizing the 23 audit. Now, we had a couple of new GAZBs that we had to address. But normally, we try to get it issued by the end of the year is, is the goal. Being short-staffed the last few years, we've struggled with getting some stuff to them and then just kind of going back and forth with them. And once you kind of miss a schedule with them, it puts everything behind. But we are trying to expedite that process going forward.
Thank you.
Any other que-- Counselor Norris?
Generally speaking, so are they on premise, obviously, when they do this work?
Yeah, they'll come out in, in the field, and then we'll also go back and forth.
Do you know approximately how many days or weeks that they're here?
I would say, in the building, at least four weeks. Kind of scattered, because they'll come in, do preliminary work for a week or two, and then they'll come back out for a couple of weeks with the main audit, and then they'll have some cleanup work, and then, like I said, we'll go back and forth when they're in the, in the office as well.
Got it, right.
And it's also a team, it's not just one or two people. I mean, they have three or four, I think, right?
Yeah, there'll be the partner on the job, which, there was a change in the partner, which was also good from the standpoint of it's the same firm, but a different partner. The, our first partner retired, and so they did switch partners on the engagement this, for this, the 23 audit.
Okay.
If I may, just to give me a visualization, so where do they usually set up when they're here?
They usually will use eight.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of July 1st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. Okay. Parks and Rec, donation acceptance. Mary?
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm, I've come to you tonight, three years ago, we started a beach toy lending basket at the beach. We actually used our old lost and found items, so we could have it. This year, we had a woman who's been, is a patron at the beach, she's been there for a number of years, and came in with a donation of two or, two to three baskets full of toys to add to this lending basket that we have. So she's been collecting them over the course of the year, so it's, she roughly estimated a roughly a fifty dollar donation to the beach lending basket for kids to have toys, access to sand toys when they're at the beach. So I'd like to have, have that accepted, so that we can acknowledge her here at this meet, next week's meeting, and then on, on Facebook, once it gets approved.
Okay. Questions or comments, Counselor Norris?
All right, so... Is this... normal procedure?
Yep.
So, this...
Any donation that is received by the City of Groton goes through the council, regardless of value. And that way, one, council knows who it is, so that we can acknowledge those individuals, but two, to ensure that the council would want to accept a gift from that individual or group.
All right, so in the meanwhile, so, I, I don't know who this person is, walks in with a donation, but we don't keep it on premise? We say, take it back until it goes through council?
No, we have it, we actually have it stored at the beach, in the office, in the supervisor's office, so that it's, it's all ready to go. We probably won't put it all out at once, we'll kind of, you know, see what's missing out of the current basket and add to it as the season goes. But currently, right now, it's in the supervisor's office at the, at the beach.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council of July 1st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstentions, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Police Department Chief? First thing is the OPM grant acceptance.
So each year, the police department has an opportunity to apply for the JAG grant, Justice Assistance Grant. It is done for prevention of violent, violence. Patrol work, or patrol-associated work is allowable under that. This year, we put in for the Marine Patrol, and the reason why we selected the Marine Patrol is because, again, and I know you've been with me since the budget season started, but we're trying to stand up the Marine Patrol again, so this helps us as far as some of that startup cost is concerned. So most of it will go to looking at refurbishment of some of the electronics that we have on there, because they age out. And then, a small amount, about six thousand dollars, is going to go to the dive team. And again, just as a reminder, we have the only dive team that's located here in, in the lower part of New London County, so, a police dive team, that is. So it's an important asset to maintain. Some of their equipment, such as regulators, tanks, et cetera, also age out, so that's where that money is going to go as well. The total amount is thirty seven thousand, five hundred, there's no match. And if you accept it, then we'll be good to go with that.
Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Norris?
What's the maximum amount that we could have requested through this grant?
Thirty seven thousand, five hundred, sir.
So, going off script here, are there any other similar grants that we could use for programming to teach youth about violence prevention?
Yes.
Do we apply for those?
Yes. One of those actually is, has to do with mental health counseling, because it's multifaceted in that it can prevent counseling to prevent some of the outside behavior that comes with that addiction, gang, et cetera, and then it also looks at the mental health aspect. That's one of the ones that we've looked at in the past, just not successful up to this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor Sheffield?
Chief, now, this grant can be used, can be reapplied annually, so to speak?
That's correct, sir. So, next year, the priorities change. We may decide we want a youth prevention, some type of youth prevention program. We could, so long as it's violence prevention or associated with activities to prevent that, then we can put it in, or apply to that category.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council of July 1st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries. Vehicle lights purchased?
Yes, sir. So, a few meetings ago, I came to you with a request for lights and sirens for our recently purchased Equinoxes. That was approved, and we went ahead and had a vendor in that, there were three bids, uh, three quotes at the time. In the meantime, though, while we're going through the approval process, that vendor took on the state police contract from Rhode Island, so there is no room in their schedule currently, so we're going to our number two vendor in that process, and in this case, that is Complus. And that's why I'm in front of you again, for the same thing.
Any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Can you remind me the price difference between the...
So it's four thousand, it's approximately four thousand dollars, ma'am. So the original winning bid was, quote, it's not a bid, quote, was, was fourteen and change, and this one's eighteen and change, which is originally why we selected the first one. That and the schedule, because some of these originally came back with a date that, yeah, we'll get you in, but not till September. So that wouldn't work for us. This one is, we can work with this individual, and, and we'll have this done beyond the council, probably a few weeks after that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of, excuse me, July 1st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries, okay? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Hang around. Yep. Is Bill here? Bill's not here. All right, so, so what I'm going to do is, we're going to go into executive session now, and then we'll come out, and we'll do public works when he's here, and then the other topics that are on the, the agenda. So I'll take... So I will take a motion to enter into executive session, pursue it to Connecticut General Statute 1-206 Alpha, discuss personnel of the police department, to include the council, Chief Burton, Corporal Dela Cruz, Officer Hyde, and Chris Connell.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, we are in executive session, so we'll go ahead and turn things off, and then we'll come back.
So, I thought it was an emergency.
Sure. You want to step out?
Nope, it'll be, it'll be fine.
Okay, alright.
It's early enough.
Well, I'm trying to step through too.
I see that. Great if I can get that fixed.
Yeah.
And be a hero.
Nothing wrong with that?
That's a nightmare.
Bill, come on up to the front. And then, press the button till you get a green light. Alright, we could call the meeting back to order. And our next item is Public Works. We'll start with street improvements. So... Dr. Public Works, Settlemire, you have the floor.
So, for right now, you want me to just go over pretty much the lengths that we have here for what we're going over with the meeting?
Well, just, yeah, what are we, so, oh, that's right, this is your first time in a committee hall. Sorry, my apologies. So, street improvements. So, let's talk about the street improvements that we're gonna do. This is the, the resolution. These are streets that we're gonna be paving. This week, this week, this year.
Okay. Uh, so, right now, what we're planning on is Ramsdale Street. Excuse me. Approximately forty-two thousand eight hundred square feet. Uh, it'll be mill and pave, and then, same thing with Cottage Street. Uh, about twenty-three thousand eight hundred square feet, and then Park Ave. About nineteen thousand square feet, all, uh, so you have mill, pave on Ramsdale. Uh, yep, mill, pave, so install, by pave, I mean installation of bituminous concrete. That's the asphalt, so that'll be the paved section. And then, same thing as far as with Park Ave. And then, the totals that we have for everything, uh, coming down. We, for Ramsdale, it's a hundred twenty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars. Uh, for Cottage Street, we have seventy-three thousand. One hundred twenty-seven dollars, and then for Park Ave, it is approximately sixty-eight thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars.
Okay, so, these are paving projects for this year. Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depo?
So, all of these were, cause I know there was a plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, based on which streets needed it the most. So, these three were already on the plan for this year to get done, correct?
Yes.
And so, this was already in your budget?
Yes.
Previously. Um, I just wanted to make a comment because the state has been doing some paving projects. And they have not been doing a good job with flaggers, in my opinion.
I, I came from that side. That was, I, I wholly, wholly agree with you.
Uh, so, I just wanted to point that out, and hopefully, um, I know that honestly, we usually do a better job than...
Yeah.
Um, the last several weeks, I've driven by their projects and just been... It's made me a little nervous, cause it's been, to me, a safety hazard. So, that's the only thing I wanted to point out, is just, um, to make sure that we have that all squared away. Because, uh, I'd hate to see, trying to do construction, have accidents. It'd be terrible.
We're not gonna have any issues with that.
Um, and I know the, the police department has, if there needs assistance, the police department will always come out, right?
Yes, ma'am.
They've been, the police department, for any other projects I've had thus far, has been great in cooperating. And anything that's, I've needed, they've, they've been more than happy, it's been open arms. So, it's, it's been a pleasurable thing. So, it's actually something that I don't have to, it's, it's usually pretty worked, worked out well and smooth.
And then, my last question, I don't know if you'll have an answer to this, cause you're new, but... I thought that Ledgerd Road Avenue, the one by?
Ledgerd Ave.
Is that on the list for next year, this year?
So, Ledgerd Ave, I believe what they were trying to do, we were going through everything, and then, my supervisor. Uh, he came down with these being the ones that need to be top priority, just because of length. The amount of work that goes into it, what we have, the last amount of time they've been taking care of. Just essentially doing a breakdown list from timeframes going in. That's about it.
So, when are we gonna get Ledger done? Cause Ledger's not in great shape.
That, I can go over with Steve.
All the way by Smith, all the way up to Mitchell.
The, uh, these right now, were deemed as what was, as far as with Steve.
Okay.
Uh, is what we need to get addressed first. So, I, as far as him, I took, you know, he, he's got the guys there all the time between sidewalks, and then, the painting, whatever else. And these are the ones that he says he thinks need to have the most attention addressed.
Alright, we'll go, I'll go back and take a look at, uh, what we also said during our budget, but I'm pretty sure these were on the list.
So, does that mean, though, that Ledgerd is gonna be put off till next year? Or, or not necessarily? Just timing wise?
Yeah, not necessarily. You, depending upon when and where we get, as far as with the, cause I know we're breaking into the first, of the fiscal year on July. So, based on how much they get done here, that's at least with the, the funds that we had, with what's coming up. So, we can see what's kinda left over. You don't wanna put the cart before the horse. I'd rather err on the side of caution, see what we have. You know, again, with me being a little bit newer, I wanna kinda, just kinda pull the reins back a little before we start going, I do too much, or something along those lines. So, Steve has been very good with, we've kinda gone through, breaking down, trying to look for whatever's needed within the budgets to try to make the most... Just essentially spend our dollar in the most responsible way.
Okay.
That's it. If I can make it, so it's, it's stretched enough, and we can get the most done with our dollar, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
Are sidewalks included, uh, with the paving, or?
This right, no, sidewalks are a separate thing. Usually sidewalks, what we have going on. Um, we're doing that as we speak. We've been going continually. Um, and that, that's usually what those guys will go and do. You'll see them beforehand. Usually, when you're doing something like that, you're not gonna wanna have the sidewalks kinda being done while you're getting that paving done, cause you're gonna be digging up. Everything near there, whether if there's any sort of catch basins need to be repaired, or anything along those lines, where you gotta do any sort of adjustments or move. You don't wanna rip into sidewalks, so it's not something you wanna go and redo fresh, cause you might have to go and tear in. So, it's not usually conducive.
One of the things we do normally do is do catch basins in advance. So, do you typically do the catch basins the year before, and then we do paving the next year?
Yeah.
Any, Counselor Norris?
So, in talking about order of paving, it would be interesting to know. Were these selected based on ease and fitting into the budget? And opposed to where they fall on the rating?
As far as rating, you mean?
CPI?
So, cause it would be interesting, like, so, there could be a, a, a street out there with a lower rating that isn't getting done. Because the thought process may be, well, it's gonna cost, it's gonna blow our budget to do this one road. Versus, we do three other streets.
Right.
But then we throw out a kilt. The plan, as we go forward, so Ledger becomes even more of a problem. And actually costs more money. So, that, that, so, that was one thing.
At the end of the day, when you're doing that, when you pave, it's gonna cost you a certain amount of tonnage, no matter what you're doing.
Yeah.
So, at the end of the day, it's gonna cost you the same if it was completely fresh, you just decided to redo it, cause you wanted to, or because there's potholes going left and right. So, at the end of the day, you're gonna have the same tonnage, you're gonna have the same milling costs, you're gonna have the same painting costs. It's gonna be the same no matter what, cause you're going off of pure tonnage, so it's just a math formula when it comes down, when it comes down to it. It's...
So, along with that, so, I know these are estimated square feet. But is there a standard? Square foot, or linear square foot, on pricing for doing this?
Uh, it all depends on what they have for, what essentially to make up. So, they call it bituminous concrete, but that's essentially asphalt. Depending upon the grade and what you're getting, you know, it's, that's gonna have a sw, you know, saying it, whether you're doing something along like, say, a highway grade. Where you have to go with state requirements, get up for like, you know, maintaining certain speeds. Cause that's how you can determine your wear time, based off of what you're doing. And then, same thing with the type of repair that you're doing here. You know, you have that, you've got temperatures, so if it, the colder it gets, the more expensive it's gonna get, because the less, there're gonna be plants that are in operation. So, the stuff that they're gonna be producing, they're producing specially for you. So, as it goes on and gets colder, it's gonna cost more throughout the time. So, you wanna, that's why when I said, you kinda narrow, with what he did when it comes to narrowing it down. Those are what he thought with what we could get for the timeframe, the money that we had. What they're batching up with what we feel is the appropriate, you know, materials to use. You know, stuff that we've used before, there's some plants where they've had bad experiences with materials that they've gotten delivered, et cetera. With the contractor that we have, with the timeframe that he's got, this is what we, you know, we came to for conclusion.
All, all prices is another thing that's driven it in the past.
So, unfortunately, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
So, my question would be, if I was to look at this.
Yeah.
Can you give me a reason why there could be potentially differences in s- square footage costs?
What, looking at what we have right here?
Yeah.
Uh, well, I mean, there probably could be, if you're going down to nitty gritty, I mean, the other thing too, this is being done by a third party. So, I mean, he's gonna probably tack on a little bit, cause he's gotta make a dollar, it's a business. That's just kinda that. I mean, they were a lowest bid, all around. But, I mean, as far as with this, I mean, coming down to why it would cost more, or you mean just more calculating the square footage?
So, that's what I'm trying to understand, and I said, I understand it's an estimate, but for example, um, I don't have my glasses on. So, if Randall comes in at approximately three dollars a square foot, why would another street come in at four dollars a square foot?
You've got length, depth, pitch. There's, it all comes down to just ba, you, it, I don't mean to say this. It, it sounds rude saying this, it's, it's like, it's literally basic geometry. It comes down to length, there's width, there's height. You're gonna have, and then you have, depending upon your pitch of the road, that's what's gonna allow for proper drainage. So, when it goes into your catch basins, that's also what's gonna lot for. If you have the right drainage over time, because obviously roads have been established, some much longer than others. If they're newer, they're gonna have more of what you'd have today, all around. Some older ones are gonna have maybe greater pitch or less. Which can determine how much wear is gonna have, cause if you've got standing water, that's gonna have an effect. Anything along those lines. And that's why, depending, some streets can cost in excess of more or less. Along with that, depending upon the drainage you have going through, there's plenty of old drainage and new, when it's come through, and that's with sewer, wastewater, anything like that you have going through the streets. Your, your catch basins are always gonna determine, especially on that. That's why typically, they'll go from the previous year, they'll work on that, get the drainage set properly. This where they know everything's functioning, working right at the right heights, everything else, right pitches, and then from there, they bring in everything to go ahead and proceed with paving and milling. Or milling and paving, I should say.
Thank you. So, that's what, and the last question I have is, so, about flagging. Cause I don't see anywhere near here a breakout for flag crew.
Traffic control. That's the same thing. In, in other words, it's, it's flagging.
Got it.
And, and traffic control, here, here's the other thing too, if I have a sub that we're going out to, this is a sub that represents the city. And one thing that I do not mess around with whatsoever is safety.
Got it.
It is absolute paramount. That is my first and utmost priority coming through. I, at the end of the day, a dollar can be made, something else, but at the end of the day, you want someone to go home, same way they came in.
Sure.
And that is it.
So, when do you think this is gonna start and end on these particular streets?
Uh, that, I could, to be honest, I gotta go, that, that'd be a better, I can ask, and I can find that out for you, that's no problem. I, I, the, right now, what we have, it's saying that July first is gonna be our start date. So, I mean, it could be... Depending upon the time, however much they, see, milling is usually the faster operation, that's gonna be what's more dependent. However much they can mill first, that's gonna be the deciding factor on your timetable. So, I mean, if they get one's area done faster than another, that, that could be, i- it's...
No, the only reason why I asked in, in, in next week, maybe, is to let folks know.
Oh, yeah.
That, hey, this is, and, and this is a great avenue to do that, for the folks that are listening. So, that was the only reason why I asked.
So, with anything like this, usually, especially with this sub, they're responsible for getting message boards, or some signs out to the public. We'll go ourselves and do an outreach. Either it would be with a flyer, or something along those lines, wherever they have best. I can go to my, my, uh, project coordinator, and she usually, she's kinda on top of that, so I'll, I'll go for, see what she thinks is best, who to reach out to, where, when. But, you usually are given, you have to give X amount of time, you know, you have to do your due diligence, it says. There's not a specific timeframe. But you have to give your due diligence enough to where you're not gonna intrude upon anyone's, you know, working commutes, their daily commutes, they have, anything along those lines. So, those, that will happen, at le, even with all these, roughly around the same time. We're gonna try to put it out. And just, you know, obviously, we'll put more towards the signage and stuff like that set up, as far as with whatever road is chosen to go on first. But we're gonna have the same thing, no matter what, going throughout, give as much notice as possible.
We can also do that. We can also do that with social media.
Exactly.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Counselor Piazza? And then I'll come back to you.
Did you say that the timeline was gonna be July first that you're talking about this year?
Yes.
Okay. Cause I noticed that, I went down Ramsdale with, uh, school bus, and noticed that they were doing the sewer raise. So, um, with that, what's, what's the approximate time of finish turning?
That, like I said, is gonna be up in the air, depending upon how much they mill, uh, what pace they get done with milling. When they get that done, that determines when they're okay to start up with paving. So, if, I, I, as far as the way they do it, their means and methods, I can't dictate to them how they do the job. They just are the ones that won the job. So, as far as with that, they could mill one street, then pave, move on to the next. They could do all milling of all three streets, get it done over, then go back to the beginning, start paving. However it is, it's up to the contractor that won the job. So, they're the ones that kinda, are the one, they, they determine how they're gonna take.
Uh, I ask a lot, um, when we have this kind of work done for school bus, because we, you know, with the town just doing what they did. That was a, a, a lot of finagling, um, cause sometimes we didn't get messages what was closed, business closed, you can't access CKs, and so on. So, I was wondering what the best route would be, because with Cottage Street especially, being a one-wayer. And we're starting up about, um, we have some new bus routes starting for the summer, we have a lot of summer work, starting in July eighth. And then, we have about thirteen more buses coming on after that, running all the way up August fifteenth.
Mm-hmm.
So, um... What would be the best way, or who would be the best point of contact, so we could actually get a message out to like, even our office that they could radio out, and they could plan. Cause what happens is if we get stuck, then they have to call the ward bed, decide how's this child gonna meet the bus. Let's say you're on Cottage Street, and they're picking right on, they have to pick up right arm Cottage Street. And let's say it's not passable. So, to get that planned ahead of time is better than what we just experienced, like, oh, can't go there, we had a bus route, so that thing's river, totally different stuff, and parents had a reroute, and be called, and so forth. And that was just one of many, but what would be the best bet for that?
So, that's part of doing the job. They have alternate traffic plans. You're gonna have something like that, just like with the Seawall project we have going on. They have to have a traffic plan, alternate traffic plan for any deliveries whatsoever, coming in or out. You gotta just, in general, because if there's roads closed, anything like that, you have to give the public X amount of time, you know, you have to do your due diligence, like I said previously. To allow them to know that these roads are gonna be closed, you have to, you know, whether it's taking, taking a different route, or figure out a different way, or a bu, say, bus stop, or you're bringing your kids together somewhere, whatever it may be. But also, whenever you're doing any sort of road job, any school buses, ambulance, fire, police. And sometimes, depending upon what they have, the contractors do as well, any commuter buses, but mostly it's primary, it's school buses. And any first response, anything that's deemed emergency like that, they have right of way, no matter what, at any point in time, through any phase of a road project.
So, here's what we'll do. We'll get in touch with Pasture Act, try to find out what the schedule is. And then, we'll get that schedule disseminated to the council, and then we'll get it disseminated, uh, out through social media as much as we can, so that people are aware.
It would be crazy. Usually, uh, the board of edutables, uh, we go back to. And they call the parents, it's, it's like quite the process, and then, they call the parents, and then they pick, they have to make this bigger arrangement, especially if you have, uh, smaller bands. With, uh, picking up, uh, children's special needs, and then pick up to right in front of their house. So, that's why I was just asking, especially that also, so that would be a big deal for parents to rearrange that.
Is that even during the summer, or is that during the school year?
During the summer too, mayor.
So, are they staffed? Who do, so if we're gonna call, I'll reach out to you separately, to discuss this.
Thank you.
Okay, any other que, uh, Deputy Mayor Depo?
I was just gonna say, for, for clarification, we aren't going to vote on this until July first.
Right.
So, that can't be the start date, correct?
Right.
I might be...
The first week of July.
Yeah.
But not July first. That is correct. They can't start until after we get it approved by council.
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
You're, you're very much right on that, I apologize.
No, you're, you're okay. Any other questions or comments? And I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of July first, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, can you service truck replacement?
So this was brought to me by, uh, the same supervisor for Public Works. I, they deemed that the best would be to try to get a new, uh, utility truck they have, um, they're going through Jangris, that's who won the bid. Um, as far as what they have, it's just, it's a new twenty twenty-four, uh, five fifty, it's a four by two, not a four by four. It's just pretty much getting in, if you look, you guys ever get to see the equipment that these guys have, they maintain it to the best of their abilities. That's one of the things I noticed right when I first came in here, they, they do the best with what they have for as long as they have. And it's just, this is one of the things they felt that meds, meds time need to be, you know, brought new into the fleet. That, that's, that's really about it, I, I, I trust what they say because I, I could eat off those trucks out there. They keep them immaculate in great condition and in great working order. So if they came to me with that, that's the one thing I said they need to run efficiently, that's why I wanted to bring this up.
And we do have a garage mechanic that, uh, maintains our fleet in Public Works. Deputy Mayor Depot?
So I know the previous Public Works director had a vehicle replacement plan, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so does this fall on the same timeline he had, are we escalating it, are we moving?
That, as far as what Bill did with that, I'm gonna go and redo my own numbers with that. I wanna try to go and see what we need as well, but I'm trying to go and also let my project coordinator and my supervisor have a little bit more of a voice. Of what they feel, they're the ones that have boots on ground, they should be the ones that are bringing up to me what they feel really needs to get replaced and done. I'm not out there with them day by day, so I'm not gonna know. So if they come, I'm trying to let them kinda bring that to me, and just get a general opinion, because they're the ones that are constantly gonna have the fleet in use. So I figure it's more fiercely responsible for me to kinda let them go ahead, decide whatever it is, and then I can come out, evaluate myself, and then we can kinda just start a game plan. Rather than having something else, thought that what he was doing was wrong, but I wanna make sure that this is the way I like doing it. I have a lot of faith and trust already in them, I like to continue that.
So in terms of that plan, was this scheduled to be replaced this year already still?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this was on the vehicle replacement.
And then, so the, obviously, the money for this is coming out of capital funds, out of your vehicle replacement plan. Does that still leave enough reserve in that plan for an emergency, or?
Yes.
How do we feel about that?
We, we have, I can't tell you the exact amount we'd have left over, but I've made sure, there's also, there's, I believe you did ten perc- yeah, ten percent contingency on it. We'll have that, plus there's what, we have the general fund, we have, there's, there's, there's enough to where they're covered. Like I said, this is the one thing, they've gone through, I said, they've got maintenance checks, they've got records of everything else, for all the vehicles they have within the fleet. They've continually upkept them, they've dealt with from fluids to any parts that have been done on a regular basis. And the only reason why they're going for this in this one, is because that's the one that really needs, they just can't do much more. But outside of, everything else is in well-working order, there's, you know, there's really nothing to, at least in my opinion, coming in from what I can see, that we have to worry about. As far as with any immediate, you know, spending or anything like that.
Go ahead, I was, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add to that, but go ahead and ask your question.
Uh, my other question is kinda unrelated, but can you tell us what this truck does?
The, it's, so it's a utility body. So that, it, it's, just like it says, it's a utility truck essentially. So they'll have it to where you can have tools stored in it, to equipment put on the back, to towing, whatever it may be, it's a bigger vehicle that I think they're gonna use. Have a box side too, to help with trimming trees, and anything along those lines, it's just gonna be used, like I said, utility. It, it's an all-around truck that they'll be using, uh, going forward, it can be used to help with hauling the materials. They're not using it really for concrete, because that's brought in as a third party, but whatever else they're gonna be needing, this truck will touch just about every bit of it.
Thank you.
So we do have a, uh, in the Public Works, they do have a replacement plan. In addition to that, we've been putting aside money similar to what we do for the fire department with the capital. So that, uh, we can purchase our larger vehicles, cause they, cause all the vehicles they have back there are fairly expensive, so.
Just like the newer garbage truck they've had?
Mm-hmm.
Same, same process, same plan, same everything. At least that's what was done in place before him, before I came.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry, were you done?
I'm all set, Councilor.
Uh, uh, Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, mayor, I'm not sure, sometimes when people, uh, speak softly, or I don't know, it's like occasions of, sometimes I hear what people are saying, sometimes not. But, so forgive me if I'm reiterating a statement or question. Um, so I just wanted to know, was this replacing another vehicle? And if not, or if we get, or if, if it is, if we're not, are we trading it in, or are we getting rid of it, or is it gonna, what, is that happening at all?
The, I believe the older one was auctioned, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Sorry, I believe the older one was auctioned, I can double check and get back, I can, Mayor, get to you, but for the most part, that's, so. The majority of what they have in the fleet, they try, there's not much that's being put out or replaced, they're getting something, the, it's, like I said, to the most part, it, it's. It's definitely needed, they can't work on them anymore, they're just, they've seen, they've seen better days at the, at the end of it, to be honest. That, that's. I'll, I'll look into it and.
The one that's being replaced has been auctioned already.
Yeah, I believe it's the one we had out there in the lineup.
Yes.
Yes.
And the auctions are done, people are, have come to pick up vehicles, and then if there are any that are gonna be left over, they'll go to scrap. Okay, any other questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of, of, uh, excuse me, July first, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, okay, all right, thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nice meeting y'all.
All right, so the next thing is group committee discussions. So I wanted to talk about the group committees. You have in your packets the agendas from the different committees, and what's outstanding. Committees aren't, in my opinion, aren't routinely meeting. Uh, and we're not getting a lot done through the committees. So I have a recommendation to abolish the committees, and then bring everything through the committee of the whole. And then if we have a larger project, uh, it can either take a couple different, uh, committee of the wholes. Or we could then set up an ad hoc committee for that individual item. Uh, instead of having the committees where we're not getting anything really accomplished with the committees. So with that, I will open the floor for discussion. I know we've always done it that way, but we're gonna open the floor for discussion, Deputy Mayor Depot?
I think, I know that, in my opinion, the committees kinda ebb and flow with their activity. Um, a while back, we had the, um. Well, right, right now, the Public Safety Committee is working on the project to change the parking on different streets.
Good.
Um, and. I think sometimes it's difficult to get the same conversations out of a committee of the whole meeting, because it's a bigger body. I think sometimes we get, uh, we've had some productive economic development committee meetings, um. I wouldn't be opposed to changing them to not have a regular schedule and to only meet when there's an issue. But I don't see why we couldn't do that and not eliminate them completely. Um, or even, like, almost have it. Be where they're a reactive committee, so if there's an issue, then they meet.
So they would be as a standalone, like an ad hoc, if you will, for lack of a better term. I mean, they would still, but they wouldn't meet regularly, they'd meet when they needed to be? Is that?
I mean, I do, I do think there should be some sort of schedule, right now, we, we had them on quarterly, and I know that there's not always something to meet about. So maybe even if we just scheduled them at the beginning of the year, to have a meeting. And to assess what that, because it changes every two years, the meetings, the committees change.
Correct.
So my thought is if we eliminate them, n- next year or the year after, when the council changes again, we may wanna institute them again. So it just seems silly to eliminate them completely, um.
Okay.
I do think they can be productive, I understand that right now, there hasn't been a lot of productivity out of all of them, but, um. Uh, to me, that's just the nature of these committees, is sometimes they, you know, have a lot of things, like Parks and Rec has a lot of issues on it, on the agenda right now. And, um. I'm not a fan of removing the resident, uh, an opportunity for the residents to give feedback, and I think that's what we would be doing by eliminate tha- eliminating them.
Okay, uh, residents can still come to the committee of the whole, uh, if they wanted to. I mean, the other thing, if we're gonna keep these, then we're gonna need to clean up the agendas to what we're actually doing. And I would like to really get something done out of the committees, I'll continue, so, thank you. Uh, any other comments on this? Councilor Sheffield, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I knew we would probably start fizzling out from the committees once we started to go quarterly, because. Then you just lose track of what's going on, and then we started to have more committee of the wholes. And, and then, once we started doing more of those, then our regular group committees didn't become as relevant as enough. And then we wanted to talk about doing committee of the whole in a group meeting on the same night, and that can end up being a long night. So, I mean, I like the original version, um, that we had it once a month. To where we're constantly going over the material, and, you know, we're not losing track of things that need to be done. So, I mean, unless we're gonna have this structure that we're gonna have it four times a year, and that's that. Then, you know, nobody loses track, but when you take three months off from a group meeting, and all of a sudden you come back to it, then you have to rehash. Things over again, and you might lose in contact with maybe people you wanna talk to, and stuff like that, so I'm. I wish we went back to the original once a month, if we're going to get it done that way, if we want things to get done. And have we don't lose track of what's on the agenda, and things could, you know, move, move, you know, more efficiently. But, um, but that, again, that's up to the rest of the council what they wanna do. I'm in favor of going back to having it once a month, so everybody's in tuned on what's happening, and we don't lose track, or lose focus of what needs to be done.
Okay.
So, that's my thing.
The reason I went away from once a month is because they were, meetings were getting canceled, meeting after meeting after meeting, we weren't meeting. If these are scheduled meetings, but if, if the committees want to get together more frequently, and wanna have special meetings, the committees can do that. The other thing that was happening is, uh, we had two mayor and councils, and only one committee of the whole. And therefore, we were counseling, canceling one of the, one of the mayor and councils. Now, with two committees of the whole and two mayor and councils, we're actually getting more work done, and our, our, the length of our meetings are, uh, reduced. And we don't have super long meetings. So that's the reason that I went away from the monthly meetings, is because we had cancellation after cancellation after cancellation, and nothing was getting done. And, you know, the word was, you know, if you wanted to die on a vine, send it to committee, or die in committee. I, I, if I could see the committees doing more and getting things more accomplished, then I would not have brought this up. And I do recognize that the Public Safety Committee is now working on the, um, uh, the parking, thank you, the ordinance in the parking. And I recognize that there are, uh, items on, uh, Parks and Rec. But again, you know, my thing is, are the committees doing, there's, are, are the committees being, uh, productive? So, Councilor Norris, you had a comment?
So in talking about being productive, so please correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, so in reading the charter, uh, it says to the effect that things that are referred to committee. Um, the committee is supposed to come back to council within ninety days with some type of recommendation. So my first thing is then, then if that isn't happening, then why have things? Like, like beyond ninety days, like get it off committee, cause there's things on here from twenty sixteen, twenty twenty. And the other thing about that, in, in speaking about the Economic Development Committee, is. Um, so the referral item there is to have the economic committee, Economic Development Committee, report out to the group. But why, if the same person is coming to committee as a whole, to give the exact same report? So I do agree with you that, hey, well, wait a minute, some things can go directly to committee of the whole. But I think before we do anything, is it worth having a com- a session within committee in the whole? That talks about what is the purpose, what is the function, we look at the charter, like, hey, if you can't come up with a, 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 a recommendation or a solution within ninety days. It goes off and goes back to the staff. So maybe that could be part of the conversation. I also agree with you that any group could have meetings every month if they wanted to. Um, you just need to tell the clerk, yeah, we're having a meeting. So I, I, not necessarily prescribed to, hey, we should have meetings every month, cause you can go ahead and do it. So I'm kinda on your side and agree with everything you're saying, but I'm also saying, because we do have new people, and I'm still kinda foggy. Like, what is the goal, what is the purpose, what are we supposed to be doing in those committees? And I only say all that stuff, cause I actually read the charter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Piazza? And then I'll come back to you.
Thank you, mayor, uh, I think, so I'm looking at my, um, one of my handwritten ones from twenty twenty-three. And if you look at it, like the mural in the city, so when I first started sharing community development, um. I first had to get the information on what was going on with it, uh, and I had heard that pictures were done, souls were done, so to track all that. So behind the scenes, besides the meeting, I had to take time to figure out that, who actually took it, who was the, who were the people that were already contacted? So that was changing hands. Um, and so I think like for the mural city, cause I've, uh, spoke with Sierra quite a few times, the reference to mural city, and Arton, Broughton. So it's not, this, to me, as far as I'm speaking to, it's not something that's going to zippity do, zippity yay very quickly. Um, and because that's how it came then, and I remember Rashad saying to Sierra, no, she wants to do it tomorrow. So, which I was all for, but it, it, uh, obviously, it's taken a lot more planning than that. And if I look at one of the other, um, referral city day fireworks possibility, that was referred back in May twenty-three, uh, to my committee. And that was not what happened for that year, but I had talked to Mary, and she was, that was a long process that she was going to get to, because there's a lot of hands to. Meet and reference to safety and place, and as a possible, and monies and so forth and so on, so, um, I had already discussed with her that, you know. When it comes around, that we could discuss it again, and so that's something else that takes a long time to process. I mean, it's, you know, so I mean, I'm sure she would come to the table with it, but it'd also be something when we talk about, um. Our activities, when we do the mayor and council meeting, that I could like bring up to the table and say, oh, so I went to, to, uh, committee meeting. And it has, you know, this is where we are, and bring it up, which I have occasionally done here, so. Um, I don't see a, a few of these things on here that could actually just be snap quickly done, not even in a quarter. Um, a quarter of a year, um, with all the planning that needs to be put into it, uh, you know, try, cause I track these down. Um, with all the planning that needs to be put into it, um, you know, try, because I tracked these down all the way from the beginning when they were referred. And I got a lot of different things that were going on and a lot of ideas and tried to mold it into, what tried to be worked out, what didn't work out, and then, and then restart from there. So, I, I, I guess my suggestion would be is I, I would like to see it stay. And maybe if we put out a calendar, I think what has happened also too, there's been some times I did want to meet, but there's, uh, but then a lot of people say, I don't have anything, I don't have anything, I don't have anything. So I would just, um, say, well, I'll just talk to Sierra. And I just go from there because then it was just like, it was canceled. So, um, you know, I don't know if we need to stretch them out a little bit more. Or, I don't, I, I wouldn't like, like to see them abolished at all, because I think it's a, an important. I mean, I, I like community development, I think it's important. But I hate to see the committees, um, abolished, because I think a lot does get done in there. And I think it's a lot where the councils can come in. And even make, maybe pe- uh, make it a piece of the mayor and council, just an update. You know, a quick update of what is happening with each committee possibly. You know, we could just say, this is in the words or whatever it is, you know?
Under Communications and Reports, counselors, that's your opportunity to report not only what you did uh, outside the council, but also the status of your, uh, committees and what happened during committee. So that's a great opportunity. That's really one of the things that that's for. Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, well, a few things. I do like, um, like Counselor Norris said, we should be reporting out every ninety days. I don't think, I don't know that we had a good, like, expectation, like this is what the expectation is for. And it, it is a confusing process for new counselors who haven't been involved in this kind of meeting or, or the way this functions. I was thinking that it might, uh, be a good idea if when we put them on the agenda, if we have an automatic ninety day, like, a report is due on, not due, but on the agenda. You know, it has the date that it was put on there. But for me, I think on, like on the public safety agenda, if we put report due to council in June twenty twenty four, or whatever. Uh, whatever the ninety days is. And then to have it on our agenda, report from Public Safety Committee, report from Economic Development, or maybe just report from group committees. But the group committees are all on different cycles with what's on there. So I, I feel like maybe we do put a standing agenda item, report from group committees. But it is hard to track when we're only meeting every three months, as Counselor Sheffield said. I do agree with that too. It's hard to track what we're doing. I do like meeting every month. I have always liked meeting every month. Um, it is sometimes hard to get all the group members there every month. However, I do think that maybe with everyone having a device, it may be easier for us to set up, we could probably zoom meetings. And that might be easier because we wouldn't have to all be here. Cause that's been, I know, several times over the past couple of years, that it's because someone's out of town or, um, unavailable. And if we could zoom to our group meetings, because they don't need to be recorded either. So, um, if we could zoom and figure that out, that would also probably help the situation. But I think, um, we've never had it on the agenda, like a, a group, group committee report out. You know, it's never been on the mayor and council agenda, like as an official thing. And maybe that would help. Because then when we get our agendas on that Friday, we'd go, oh, I need to put a report together for Monday. I don't know, those are my thoughts.
Communications and reports, just put a sub bullet.
Okay. I know it seems like a small thing, but I, when you've got, when you've got all these meetings.
If council wants that as a reminder, uh, we can do that. Uh, so how do we go forward from here? I'm sorry, Counselor Sheffield, do you have a comment?
Well, that's where the minutes, when we give the minutes of our, um, group meeting to Danny, and Danny would put our minutes in the agenda for that mayor and council. Then we would feed off of those minutes of whatever was discussed in our meeting. That's what should be done, is our minutes that come to you through our group meetings, that should come back in our agenda for the next mayor and council. So we'll have that in front of us to present to the council.
Why would that, why would that go to the, because those minutes are for that committee?
Right.
So, why, why do they need to be included as part of the pack?
To discuss at the mayor and council of what we did in that group meeting, when we discuss communication reports.
As backup?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what Deb used to do years ago.
Counselor Norris?
I really like Deputy Depot's suggestion of maybe, i- if a group wants to meet every month, fine. But I think it holds council to task. If we know, once a quarter, let's say, that Economic Development has to come here and report out, what have you been doing in your meetings or not in your meetings to address those referral items? And me coming here could be simple as, this is what we've done, these are the tasks we need to complete. Or, the group has decided to close this referral and move on. But at least it brings everyone in the loop, including the residents.
Well, and if we're going to do this, I'm not going to tell the clerk, okay, every quarter, every ninety days, you need to put in, you need to change your agenda. We're going to have it on the agenda and you report out every two weeks. And you may say, I have nothing to report on my committee. But that way, that tickler is there so that you can use that. Is that acceptable? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I, I think that's good. And I like, um, Counselor Sheffield's idea of putting our minutes in the packet. Also because I, unless I look them up, I don't see the minutes from the other groups.
Okay.
Meetings.
Alright.
Um, so I do think that it's a helpful reference.
Do that?
Yeah, um, so since we changed them to quarterly, they've been scheduled on committee of the whole nights or any, any other meeting nights. So they've been sent typically to the entire council at that time also.
Alright, uh, so what else do we need to do to move forward on this? So I'm going to want you guys to go through your agendas and see what items need to be taken off the agenda. And you can, all you got to do is take a motion and a second and vote on it, and it's removed. Right? You don't have to wait for it to timeout. If you don't know what it is, or if you don't think it belongs on there, then we'll take it off. But, uh, you don't want to, I want, one, I want to clean up the agendas. Uh, Counselor Piazza, I recognize that there are some things that are going to take, government doesn't move fast. So, there are some things that will take a year or more in order to get things done. And some are long-term planning kind of things that depend, that, uh, are dependent upon staff schedule, time, money, you know, different factors. And that's why they may need to stay on, uh, for a period of time. Counselor Sheffield?
Uh, yeah, for instance, I guess, uh, ordinances. Each of the committees, I believe, have the list of ordinances to review to see if we can eliminate. And speaking of the, um, the parking, or let, no, the, uh, ordinance for the noise, the nuisance, I think that's on, uh, Counselor Piazza's, uh, committee for Community Development for the, uh, noise ordinance, for that to be removed from nineteen oh four or whatever. So that's something to where we need to get our list of ordinances and go through them and see what we can eliminate.
I think that's been completed. I have a spreadsheet of ordinances. And the committees have already, that got started back when I was a counselor. And, uh, so I think we've went through that. And so now the way that I'm handling that is the individual department heads are going to go through and, uh, and they're going to start revising ordinances. So the ordinances are going to fall into three categories. You know, they don't, we don't need them anymore. And then we're going to do one, uh, large, uh, posting in the newspaper to get rid of them. The other one is that they need to be updated with maybe, uh, new fees and things like that. And then, but in that case, we're going to pull the fees out, put them in a separate resolution. And then the third category is they need total revision. And staff's going to take care of that. So I think I have, uh, I think I have council's input from, uh, from the past on that. So I think we're, we're good on orders.
Council at that time. So I do know where.
Okay.
You had, you know, turned that over to staff, so.
Well, turn it over to staff is new. The council's tasking was to review with staff, to, to look at certain ordinances that were given to them and see which category they fell in. That has been fed back in a spreadsheet, uh, and we have that. Okay, is there anything else that we need to do for the group committee discussion? Okay. Alright, we'll finish that. Uh, Cal start time, so committee of the whole starts at six o'clock. Years ago, it was at seven o'clock. In two thousand and nineteen, uh, actually in two thousand and eighteen, but in, uh, two thousand and nineteen, when we sent out our schedule, we started the committee of the holes at six o'clock. And the reason we did was we were having committee of the holes that were going three and four hours. And if you start at seven or seven thirty, then that means you're not getting out till nine, nine thirty, ten o'clock. And, uh, council said, okay, look, this is killing us. And so that's why I went to the start time of committee holes at six o'clock. Uh, there was a request to, uh, look at this. And so that's why I put it on the committee of the hole for the night to discuss this. So with that, I'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I think I like having them earlier. I was on the council, as Counselor Sheffield was, when we had them later. And we did have some pretty late nights. Like, we definitely had some meetings that went till like eleven PM, which is, to me, that's very late for a Monday. But we, now that we have two a month, our meetings often do end pretty, at a reasonable time. So I don't know if, that it would be terrible to, if we're going to keep having two a month. I think we could sustain a later time if we had to. Um, personally, six o'clock works for me. But I don't think it would be terrible to switch it considering we have more committee of the holes now. We, I think we wouldn't end up having those super, super late meetings because we're doing it twice a month.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Anyone else? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think six o'clock is good. I mean, I think pushing up to six thirty possibly, because I know some of us, it makes it tight for us for six o'clock. But I, the later time, it, you know, even though we're ending sooner than we used to, because for me to get up at five o'clock in the morning is like treacherous or late night. So, I mean, I would agree with the pushing it later to six thirty. I really wouldn't last, go later than that. But also too, I know you have to think about your department heads, what works for them too.
Understand. Uh, City Clerk, if we change the start times this year, that means the rest of my committee of the holes will all be special meetings. Is that correct? Cause we, we sent them out to the Secretary of State?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, we could do that. It just means that, uh, we'll need to be tighter on the committee of the whole. We don't, I don't tend to be loosey goosey, and we don't tend to add a bunch of stuff onto the committee of the holes on, on that. Any other discussions? Counselor Norris?
Um, can I make a suggestion that we leave as is?
Okay.
And then revisit this in November, because we send out the calendar mid-December to the state for January?
Correct. I would, I would need to know by the beginning of November.
Okay.
So mid-October.
We can, uh, September, October, bring it back up again and discuss it.
Exactly.
And we'll just keep it at six. Is keeping it right now, keeping it at six, is that okay with the council in general? Okay, then we'll keep it at six. Alright, moving on. Parking crosswalk update. So I am working with Electric Boat. So, could you, we're going to share the screen? Okay. So I'll talk a little bit about parking and talk a little bit about, uh, some of the initiatives that are going on with Electric Boat. So as the council knows, and for people that are in the audi- are watching this on television, we're, uh, in the next three to five years, we're going to have an influx of twenty-five hundred to five thousand new employees for Electric Boat. Depends on who you talk to on any given day, what the amount is. But I'm basing it on twenty-five hundred, three thousand people. So right now, what do I do with my pen? Thank you. I just want to use this as a pointer, because that is a touchscreen. And next thing you know, we'll be in East Yerbro. Alright, where this pen is here, this is the headquarters building. And you can see, these are parking lots here. This is the G lot. This is the L lot. And then, where's my M lot? The M lot is down here, just out of sight. Okay, so this is the new six hundred building. That's the Columbia Class Assembly Building. This is six oh five. That's the crew building for the crews and for, um, the coats, which is the module where they test the modules. There, what Electric Boat wants is they want to put a crosswalk here. Now, what you don't see is the new parking lot that they have there, this, that I think is called the J lot. But they want to put a crosswalk there along with a beacon, a flashing beacon. Now, this went, so this is Rainville. It comes down Rainville. This becomes Chester. And then it intersects here at Eastern Point Road. From this intersection here on throughout, now becomes three forty-nine and is a state road. So, the discussions in the past, the state has said, uh, anything that they want, EB needs to tell them. So EB went to the Department of Transportation. And now the Department of Transportation is saying, well, we hear what you want, but you need the local traffic authority to agree with that in order to do that. So, one is crosswalks, two is, uh, parking. So right now, this lot, L lot, and the lot down here, M lot, is, uh, relatively full. There was a parking management study that was done a couple of years ago and presented. And it says that to peak in twenty twenty-seven, we're, there's going to be a twelve hundred parking spot deficit. And that's one of the challenges. Now, right now, we already have people parking in residence, in the resident areas. And the residents have reached out to us and said, hey, we have a problem. And that's why, uh, we did the ordinance. And that's why Deputy Mayor's Committee is now looking at what streets are going to be resident parking only, or residential parking. My, my recommendation is basically from this building here, you put a pin in it. That's not exactly what I wanted, okay? You put a pin in it, you draw a half mile arc, and everything within a half mile now becomes residential parking with the exception of carve-outs for businesses. And that's one of the things that, uh, the deputy mayor is, is looking at with her committee. And that's one of the things that, uh, the deputy mayor is, is looking at with her committee. We also have other streets within the city of Groton that are also residential parking already. So we have two issues that we have as a result of the increase, uh, of, of people here. One is parking, one is speeding. So that's one of the things that we're addressing and we'll be talking about speeding later on. I'll get the chief to come in and, and do a brief. Deputy Mayor Depot, you had a comment?
I, I was just gonna ask, um, so are you looking for, do you need approval? You don't need approval from us to go forward on the crosswalk?
No, I, I'm just, this is, so what I'm giving you now is, this is informational. Uh, I am meeting internally with my staff to talk about, is the crosswalk, is that, or is that a good idea or not? And also the beacons. So the beacon, so I'll get to the beacons when I go back to my, my, uh, uh, back to my seat. But I wanted to come up here and talk a little bit about the parking. Now, Electric Boat has... So here, this was the contractor lot. They are having the contract, they've, they're now leasing these spaces. They're also going to lease some spaces. Let's see, there's a Ecom. I think they're gonna lease spaces down here. And they are looking at, uh, where's my campus? All right, there's Pfizer's campus. They're also looking at possibly leasing some spaces in Pfizer Spot. Uh, several years ago, when I was talking to Pfizer, I identified that they had excess capacity on parking and Electric Boat had a deficit of parking. So I am, I'm, you know, make, so we made a match and they're now communicating, trying to figure that out. There are other efforts that Electric Boat is trying to do with parking. We have been working with Congressman Courtney, Senator Blumenthal, Senator Murphy, to try to get earmarks for Electric Boat so that Electric Boat can pil, can build a thousand, uh, space parking garage. Electric Boat doesn't wanna build that on their own. It's not in their business model, it's not in their plan. Uh, but there, we're trying to get some earmarks and see if we can get something. The other thing that Congressman Courtney's trying to do is for upcoming contracts, to try to get a clause that talks about a certain percentage of the contract can be used for infrastructure to include parking. And that might help, uh, with this. But these are some of the discussions that we are, uh, that we're having. So let me go to my notes. So going back to this spot here, the J lot. It says, "We're currently completing a process for a, for a proposed rectangular rapid flashing beacon on Route three forty-nine, providing a cross, crossing at Electric Boat J lot on the east side of the road to the new facility on the west side of Eastern, uh, Eastern Point Road." "Electric Boat is performing the installation, but per CTDOT requirement, the flashing beacon equipment will technically need to be owned by the city." So Electric Boat would pay for this, but then we would own the flashing, flashing beacon. That's why I'm bringing it internal, so we can discuss it to make sure it's the right, the right thing to do for the city and for Electric Boat and for the residents uh, in order to address this issue. In addition, uh, they want better and more ambient lighting in the crosswalk areas. Now, we're trying to define exactly what those are. Uh, several years ago, we started meeting with Electric Boat. I meet with Electric Boat every two weeks now. And we have increased lighting at all our intersections. We've increased crosswalks. We've actually, uh, put the speed limit inside here on the roadway. One of the things that we're looking at now, where's Chester? Is potentially shutting down Eastern Point Road at Electric Boat, starting basically on the other side of two twenty-one right here. Going down to the, just next to the entrance going into the parking garage. Because in the afternoon, when Electric Boat, uh, discharges at, or when they leave at two thirty, uh, it's like a, a hill of ants that's leaving. And it's, it's, basically, I'm looking to make that a pedestrian walkway. We're working through, we've talked to our, uh, first responders, police and fire. And we're talking about what things we, they would want to see. We're looking at potentially something like a, like a, uh, railroad crossing gate that would be, that would be, uh, controlled by the fire department. That way, they could go through here if they needed to and it wouldn't be an issue. This is something that we're looking at. They wanna lower the speed limit. Now, right here, this is already, I think, fifteen miles an hour. Going back up here, though, the speed limit in this area is twenty-five miles an hour. And they wanna, they want to, um, reduce it to fifteen. So we'd have to go to Connecticut DOT to do that. They also want speed bumps or speed tables to force vehicles to slow down. We had talked about doing this here, but my, uh, fire department had an issue with that because of the equipment and the, and the potential damage with suspension and those kind of things. And so I'm not, this is why I wanna go internal. I'm not sure that I'm ready to recommend that the state put speed bumps or speed humps here. The speed, the speed tables that they would want to put there are similar to what's on Bank Street in front of the train station and the, the, uh, bus station over in New London. And then, uh, the sec, the nu, another thing that they're looking at is street lights at the corner of Rainville and Mumford. So this is Mumford, let me move this down a little bit. So this is Mumford Ave. This is Mumford Ave. This is Rainville and then it becomes Chester at the end. They wanna put a traffic light here. Because what you find is there's crosswalk, there are crosswalks there, but you have competing interest here. You have pedestrians trying to get to their cars. And then you have people that are already in their cars that are trying to get through. And so what you'll see is, you'll see the cars nudge up to the pedestrians. And actually, they'll get in, there'll be cars in the box between a line of pedestrians on both sides. So that's something else that we're working with. Electric Boat is working with us to get the information out to the, to the, um, employees to make sure that, you know, that they're educated and, uh, they're being careful not to hit their fellow employees. And I think, hold on, let me see if I had anything else in my stack. Nope, that's it. So that's it from the info, for the information on, uh, Electric Boat and the, uh, the parking and the traffic and crosswalks and all those, all those things. So I'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot, I see your hand.
Um, I just wanna comment, I, I do, I, like I said, I drive that way many times a day. And, um, they kind of already treat it like a pedestrian walkway. Um, but I do think that a crosswalk, there's definitely more pedestrian traffic on that other side near where that new lot is. It's noticeably more pedestrian traffic going that way. Um, and I don't know, I don't think it'd be a bad idea because I do see also that on that Mumford Ave, it is difficult for pedestrians to get across that walkway because people are trying to get out of there. Um, I do think if we're gonna put crosswalks further down on Eastern Point Road, that that then would be the preferred pathway for pedestrians instead of going up and across Chester and Mumford. You know what I'm saying?
I, I do, but let me, oh.
Because I think that's part of the problem. That would be changed if we, if you put crosswalks on the other side of Rainville and Chester.
Yep.
Less people will need to go across that crossing at Mumford.
Well, so I agree, but, and let me tell you where the but is. So you have employees here working on the Virginia class and also working on, um, other submarines that are in overhaul. Here, whoops. You, you driving or are I driving?
Both driving.
This is where the Columbia class, this is gonna be the new fleet ballistic missile submarine. And so what they're looking to do, uh, bring it, so there's a road names come up. There you go, thank you. So this area right here is where the jail, thank you, is where the J lot is. That's where the Big Brothers, Big Sisters were?
Yep.
Was? Was. The building was.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and so they're looking to put the walkway across that and then walk down here. And there, and so there's gonna be several hundred to a couple thousand people coming in this way
Mm-hmm.
to support the Columbia. So you're right, there's gonna be increased traffic, pedestrian traffic there. But you're still, the pedestrian traffic up here is not gonna diminish as a result of the increase, because they're gonna have increased people here. But this traffic up here with pedestrian traffic is not gonna decrease because they're still building two clo, two Virginia class submarines a year.
Mm-hmm.
So now what we need to do is we need to address both, both sets of pedestrians and how do we keep them safe? The other thing they're looking to do is they're looking to, uh, make a deal with Anchor Point Apartments to connect the L lot and basically come through here somewhere
Mm-hmm.
in order to go so that people from the L lot can either then go down here to the Columbia or go up to the Virginia. And that way, it keeps them off the street. And that's what we're trying to do. But at some point, they're gonna have to cross the road and that's where this whole crosswalk and the flashing be, flashing beacons are gonna come in. So does that address your question?
Yeah, yeah, I do, I, I mean, most of all, I think increased, any of these things is a good idea. I also do, because I, I think that road is twenty-five miles an hour, but then I think it goes to thirty towards the end of that road.
Down here.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I definitely think, I mean, the whole road should probably be at least down to twenty-five.
Right.
Instead of being thirty. Because I do think that people come in that road going thirty and don't realize how quickly it goes down to twenty-five and then to fifteen. So I do see people going like thirty and then they get to, people crossing the road and they have to slam on their brakes.
Well, up here, we're at fifteen. I am in agreement with taking that down to fifteen miles an hour. Now, I don't know if, uh, you guys were following this a few years ago, back in two thousand and twenty-one, the, the, uh, state was looking at doing a road diet here.
Mm-hmm.
And they were gonna go from the three lanes to two lane, one north, one northbound, one southbound. I was against it then because of construction. I'm still against it now and Electric Boat is against it now because, uh, when you have deliveries coming down here
Yep.
to the contractor gate,
Mm-hmm.
you will see people backed up on the extreme right-hand side.
Mm-hmm.
And if it was only one lane, then you would have blockage of traffic. So I'm not inclined to endorse a road diet at this point because it's only gonna get worse with the deliveries for the, uh, the Columbia class. Now, there are parts and pieces that are gonna come via truck, but there's a lot of the stuff that's gonna come, uh, via barge. And so I think, I think that's it. So now I can stand down. I think I'm done for now. Thank you, Danny. Good comment. So we will, we will continue to look at safety. And, uh, internally, I have, uh, Public Works Director, I have police, I have fire, I have, uh, matter of fact, we just met today with, uh, Dan Bierer. He's the safety manager over there. And, uh, like I said, every two weeks, we have a discussion. There's been a lot of things that we've done. One of the things that we're looking at is also access to the north gate, which is the gate outside of Daniel's Barber Shop and the gun shop there. Because if you go look at that, you step outs, you go through the turnstile, you take one step, you're right there at the edge, you take one more step, you're in a, you are in the road. And so we're evaluating what we could do there. Uh, let's just leave it at that. So that's, that's what I wanted to talk to you guys about. So I wanted to give you the update and that's basically my update. Any questions or comments? Other questions or comments? Counsel Piazza?
Well, thank you for all the work that you're doing on this. I mean, I, I know it's a definite need. When you're talking about Rainville going down to Chester, um, so that, I think that the blinking light does help because even like experienced, you know, as a bus driver, as a person, I'm, uh, think more now being a school bus driver, you're more aware of crosswalk. But, um, like even with the, everything that's been paved now over, say, in the town and they've dotted out crosswalk signs, but people still don't, you know, don't stop. So I think light is good. I just saw some new ones. I wasn't sure if it was in the city or the town. It's like, oh, that's great because now that's definitely seen. Um, I know what the National Guard unit for where it is, especially because some of them, especially when we have daylight savings time changing, they have a really bright light. I can't remember what they do there. But I mean, as soon as we turn on the light, we can see them. It's very easily to see. Um, I can't, I can't remember what kind of lighting they do, but it's, it's really great. So you can see them, like, even come out of the lot. But also too, when you're talking about, um, I think the beam lights, uh, alerting you to the crosswalk is coming up is great. Um, I do agree with you as far as the two lanes there because I can tell you that some, uh, some of the stops you have to turn off at Nicholas onto Eastern Point Road and there's been deliveries there and it's backed up. And then the people just go around them and they're actually coming to that lane. And then you can come and then you're making your turn and then just people zip on, you know, just coming around and it's like, it's really unsafe. So I, I agree with that because that would back it up. It makes it difficult for larger vehicles to turn off of those roads.
Okay.
When you have stops there. And when you talk about Chester and Mumford, there is a bus stop at Mumford. I can't tell you, I, however something's wrong, I used to have a, a stop there. And that is pitiful when you're dropping kids off, um, coming home from school. That is a scary, scary place to drop off students because you're trying to be very careful with pedestrians. The cars are just, by now you pay attention to the crosswalks and then you wanna get these kids off the bus. It's like insane. Down by Daniel Barber Shop, um, yeah, I don't, I don't know what the plans are for that, but I can tell you there's usually a stop right on, um, I think, what is that? That's Allen right there.
That's Allen there, yes.
You know, the bus is pulled back. What happens is we get, uh, people that come down that road, I think we discussed this before, that come down Allen, they park right on the corner. It makes it difficult for us to turn. So then we're held back and then we, we have to be careful that we're not putting the tail end of our bus or any part of the bus over the crosswalk. And that gets a little hairy, you know? Because how people park there and people coming down to park and drop off the kids. So there's a lot going on. So I appreciate all these efforts and everybody tuning into it. But I will tell you that crossing pedestrians is so, it's really, really scary. See, so many people run right over those things. It's very nerve-wracking.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, that's all I have. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention, motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, counsel, for coming out.
Bye.
Sorry I took so long. I know you gotta get ahold of the IT guys.
No, it's okay.
Say again? Okay.